Southampton Township work session for April 22, 2020. This is Gray Welly, Board of Supervisors. We'll go down the line and introduce ourselves.
Ted Kaplan.
Susan Cummings.
Ed Shannon.
And Kim Gutseradis. Followed up by Joe Galdo and Frank Dillon as solicitor.
So what I would like to do during the work session is give a brief, quick summary on the township. And then if we have any quick questions, we could get that done too. Basically, the county commissioners had a meeting today via the Zoom. Basically, there was a couple of issues they were talking about with the township managers. One being potentially or hopefully at the federal level that there would be a stimulus number three that would deal with the revenue shortfalls that are projected at the state and locality levels, being the smaller municipalities in the United States, specifically with regards to Bucks County. A lot of the managers are very concerned with regard to their revenue projections. So that we got to keep an eye on as we go forward. The other issue was dealing with possible more in the recreation programs, pools and types of things in the parades. Basically, they're taking direction from the governor's office as well as the Pennsylvania Department of Health. So that would that would impact those respective areas. That was mentioned as far as the township operations. We're running the same as we were in our last meeting. Basically, I'm preparing hopefully for either a soft open for the fourth, the eighth, or the 11th, depending on, you know, the governor's accommodations. And during the soft opening, basically, we would allow for some permit applications to come in and at least get that into the emails and Dropbox components. Potentially have our typical staffers out there doing their typical work. But my concern would be everybody having their mask, their gloves on, following the CDC rules and regulations. But we will basically be making that soft opening based off of more of what the governor's doing. So but we do have that in the in the work, so to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Sue.
Joe, can you possibly like put in something to effect because it would be really your call on perhaps limiting the amount of people that come in and possibly?
Right. One of the things I was gonna, one of the things we were gonna attempt to do, talking to the technology guys tomorrow, is possibly put some sort of scheduler mechanism on the on our website. And basically have 15 minute intervals. If you are to come into the building, you got to be properly attired. And basically, everybody would go through that corridor where if you have an interview or if you have an appointment, that's how you're going to be handled. But everything would be done via a scheduler and by appointment, basically. So we get to manage, especially if we're short staffed at a point, especially like if we start off and we're short staffed. We want to make sure that we're managing the needs of the residents and we would do some sort of scheduler system. So that's how I would handle that.
Would there be any temperatures being taken as people?
Yeah, we actually just ordered five other laser thermometers that would be dispersed. Two more to the fire, to the fireside, one more for the police, one for Public Works, and one in the admin building. So we would have that the people coming in and out would have their temperatures read too, as well as the employees.
Great plan, though.
Yep.
And Joe, with that being said, now, May 8 being the extended stay at home. So you're gonna wait and see what the government, the governor does pass May 8. Now, when you do have people, when that comes to be, when you have people come in, you're not gonna, are you gonna keep them in the lobby and talk between the glass?
It would be in the lobby, in the glass, since that's the more security area and more protective area for our, for the residents as well as for the employees here at the township.
And can they have, can they have appointments so you don't have too many people in the lobby?
Well, that's the whole thing about having the scheduler up is that we would do 15 minute intervals. And, you know, we would have to resolve the person's issues or complaints within that 15 minutes. And then we would have to move it along. We don't want too many people in that lobby area because that defeats the whole, the whole rule of the six feet.
So maybe we should make it a little later than 15 to give somebody a chance to get out and then?
Yeah, and that's fine. And it depends on the circumstance and what they're, you know, what the resident or individual is looking for.
Joe, perhaps is anybody in the office able to set up Zoom conference meetings with anybody instead of them actually coming in the building?
That's that's also a possibility that we could, whether we use the Microsoft product as we're using now or using the Zoom component, that's also a distinct possibility too.
Because it would last?
Everything I want to throw on a table that could be as effective as we can be and keep the distancing rules in place and protect every, the residents as well as the employees, we're gonna try to put forward.
How, what's wrong with FaceTime when somebody, you know, on somebody's municipal phone? It's easier for people and they know how to do it.
That's an option too, Frank. Absolutely. That's an option. So I mean, that's basically kind of what I wanted to talk about. We only have another five minutes before we would get into the board meeting. Matt, if you wanted to discuss something dealing with the parks kind of quickly, you were?
Yes, just good evening, everybody. I have received a high number of phone calls and a lot of residents want the parks back open. They feel that they're within the Bucks County guidelines and therefore we should follow that standard as well. It's just that we have an entirely different set of amenities.
You're breaking up, Matt, a little bit.
We have skate park. You guys got me? Hello?
Yep. Try again, Matt. You're breaking up.
All right. I don't know where I cut out at.
You said you have a whole different set of amenities.
Okay, the, it's the park amenities that concern me the most. We can open the walking trails and allow people to walk on the walking trails. But as soon as that first group of people or person goes onto the playground, goes onto the skate park, there are basketball courts, tennis courts. Our parks are much smaller than the state and county parks is all I wanted to point out to the board.
Well, my understanding is with the county, it's just the trails that are open.
Correct.
Yeah.
But what's gonna keep the people off of those playgrounds? There was just something that I read where, you know, they arrested some woman because she wouldn't get off of playground somewhere. And I just, I hate?
They would have to be cordoned off, they're partitioned off, so people can't?
Exactly. And that's what I was getting at is that then puts the burden on us to say that the park is open, the walking trails are open, but the other amenities are closed. And, you know, then that there needs to be like caution tape, barricades, cones, things to clear that off. And unfortunately, like we experienced before the closure, people were not observing those, you know, measures put in place. So.
I also, I also think about, go ahead, Ted.
I was gonna say, we can partition off, like for instance, a Love Grove section and have signs that they're not permitted to go into that area just to stay on the trails. I mean, let's face it, we don't have the park?
No, understood. That's, that's one part of, you know, our 13 park system. So do we want to do it kind of the way, a little bit of the way, all the way?
What do you mean, all the way? I'm not following you.
Being that the park system has 13 different parks, I think in this conversation, you're referring specifically to the walking trails at Playwick. If we wanted to reopen the walking trails of Playwick, yeah, I'd be fine with that. But Russell Elliott, I would feel differently. There's athletic fields, there are tennis courts, playground.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it would be then, I'd be restrict that to those areas and signage would be included.
And I, I also think to myself too, the parks in the county and the state, they also have much more ample parking. I just think to myself too, you know, where parking is tight there, you drive by.
All right. We're, we're, guys, we're getting a lot of echoes. And I believe what we need to do is kind of, unless you're speaking, that, that a, that you shut off your microphone. We're getting a lot of reverberation.
All right. Like I was saying prior to that, as far as the parking too in our park, you know, we're also much tighter than, you know, a county or a state park. That would also be a concern of mine, just, you know, I drive by there and parks are always being used, which is a great thing. But people always seem to hang out, you know, by the cars, chit chatting, things like that. I just, I'm not sure if I feel 100% safe with that too.
Yeah, and I thought about that, maybe, you know, if we, if we block off every other parking spot to allow, it should be about, what, about six or seven or eight feet the width of a spot? And just allow parking at every other spot to keep cars, otherwise people will be banging our car doors into each other and they'll be six inches apart.
Right, right. And, you know, and then that also brings up the question that if they, if we do that, I could see people moving a cone or, you know, wanting the park to be regardless. I don't know.
I think it's a lot of extra work on our police force to ma, to manage this also.
I, I agree with that.
Well, I mean, if we block off, if we block off and put signs off, and, can you hear me?
Yeah.
If the, and I don't, you know, I don't know, I could talk to the chief. But if the police join their patrol, patrol in that area and see what's happening.
Is it just me or am I having a hard time turning it up?
I'm having a hard time too.
I'm having a hard time too.
This is Ed. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I talked to the chief today. So, and he's very much in favor of the park being open. Playwick, you know, we're talking specifically. And he, as Ray suggested already, every other parking space. And my rationale for this is if you put up a sign, and I was just out hitting balls yesterday, and they have a sign that says you must wear a face mask. They had every other driving range signed off. You can't go to one right next to each other. And parking is the same situation. Can't park your car next to the next guy because they got every other parking space that they can use. Now, that's not to say that most of the people, I'd say 90% of the people had a face mask. There was three guys on the far end of the field and they did not have a face mask. And then my rationale for that is if they're gonna be stupid and silly, how do you contract all of that stuff? I mean, we have signs up, nobody broke down the barriers getting into Playwick now. Why can't we allow at least, as Matt has already suggested, and the parking is every other spot? And, and obviously jungle gyms, you rope them off. But I think, I mean, we've had, I've had a bunch of calls and letters and stuff that say, why can't we open, open it? Because the county, the county parks are already open anyway. And in addition to that, there's nothing that, that, to law says you can't be here. I mean, and further bar and progressing, I mean, if there's parking lots and everything else there, and there's nothing that says you can't be there. So I, I just, why we can't open, trying, but anyway, it just seems ridiculous that we can't open the park.
Well, as long as, as long as everybody follows the CDC recommendation, which is, I mean, the masks are urged. The order is six feet apart.
Right, right. And really, right.
Lot of feedback, Ed.
A lot of feedback is right, yeah.
Yeah. But then that's what I was, I was thinking about, you know, maybe we could do it on a trial basis. Keep the bathroom, the restrooms closed, the playgrounds closed, the, the walking trails open. Monitor it, see how it goes. And if it goes okay and we're getting good feedback on it, then we could continue it.
Sure. And I talked to the, and he's, he's in favor of it, you know, and he's, but he did say that he's not gonna, he's not gonna have a rule with him to say we're not six feet apart, you know?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said, Ed. It was?
He's in favor of opening the park, but he's not gonna take a ruler out and say, you guys are not six feet apart. The parking we can do, he's, he's okay with that. But I don't know how you're ever gonna make everybody do everything. It's just not possible.
But we don't have park rangers to enforce it, so we, we would have to, um, just let everybody, well, everybody knows what the order is at this point, the six feet apart physical distance. Everybody knew that.
Read English, what's the point?
What's that?
In English, what's the point of doing, putting anything up then? Have a sign up that says, stay six feet apart. If you violate the rule, they're gonna go through a red light. You know, it's the same problem. Just get everybody, every time. I don't think that's possible. But if you put signs up like this driving range, everybody with a face mask, except for at the far end of the field. But everybody else had them in there. And every other driving range was, was open to play. But you couldn't do it next to the guy next to you, which has got to be about 15 feet. I don't know, I don't know why it's not being open. I, I felt this before and I expressed this before and it's what the comments stand. More people are running and running because they can't get there, they can't even go to a park. I mean, they've been, they've been in the house for three, four weeks.
Do we, do we want to do anything then tonight? Come up with some type of consensus or some type of, you know, idea to open these on a limited basis?
Could we have the Chief Kremel on right now?
I don't know. There you go, chief. Go ahead.
Hi, what's the question? I'm sorry, I was having a hard time.
Well, we had a conversation today and I just, I just read off the conversation that we had. So if you can put your two cents worth in, I appreciate that.
Well, like I said, I would, I, whatever the consensus that a board is, I don't think if we did with safety precautions in place, we probably could do it, the county opened the parks, I think the state is as well. But we'd have to make sure there's some safety precautions in place first.
Sure, right, agreed. The same, the same one the CDC already had with the bigger parks.
I actually, I did like the idea of using cones or something like to block off every other parking spot to kind of keep people away from each other and limit the number of cars at a time.
Right.
And I think that if, if we were gonna do this, you'd have to give us the authority to close a park temporarily if it got too crowded.
Okay.
Solved the problem.
Yeah. My sense, people are gonna do that themselves. Getting, they're gonna clear out a bunch of people. That's my sense. Because it happens in other areas that you go to.
So when you said?
Open. There's not, there's nothing to stop people from going to a squirrel to walk, as an example. Plenty of fields, there are things that can be there and it's not being, it's not being closed. It's open.
So when you said when it's too crowded, then close it. So if people are six feet apart, I'm not quite following, like what constitutes what's too crowded?
You'd have to leave it to our judgment.
Too many cars.
Yeah, too many cars in there. We're just gonna have to put the barricades up and close it for a couple hours. You know? It's a, I mean, it'd be a pain in the neck for us. I really don't want to do that. But if that's what it takes to, to get this moving, you know, we'll make do.
My, my only, my only concern, Ted, is, you know, we put cones up and then, you know, people want to walk and they see the other cars and, you know, the cones just get moved intentionally. And then before you know it, you know, they're doing what we don't want them to do. So as long as you're okay with it, Ted, and, you know, I know you guys are busy. But if you think you guys can handle that, if there are complaints, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm more than just on board with it, Ted, because it's really ultimately falls into your jurisdiction of, you know, monitoring that.
Oh, I think.
Go ahead, chief.
Just as long as we have the, you're gonna give me the authority that if we feel it's too crowded, we're gonna close a park for a couple hours. It's gonna be an unpopular decision for people, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe it should be posted too, that there's a limit on how many people the park can withstand under these circumstances. And it may become necessary for the park to become temporarily inadmissible to some people until other people leave. Like some, something that advises people, hey, this could happen if it becomes overcrowded.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with any of that. I, my, my biggest concern is getting people out of their houses and doing something. Running, I mean?
Sure. I mean, I mean, exercise is, is, is good. I mean, walking is great, especially when you have cabin fever and the weather, if the weather's getting warmer. As long as the chief thinks that he can handle that, being able to monitor how many people are there and, and as long as you can handle that.
Well, we're not gonna station an officer there for this. But if we got a complaint or, you know, I'm driving by and it looks crazy, then we'll do what we have to do. I've been out there every day. Really hasn't been a huge problem in the parks. Like I said, the Playwick, yeah, I went down there today, the county park, and it was empty. Yeah, so.
It was a chilly day.
Yeah, I mean, we get a warm day, you know? But I haven't heard anybody from the county getting inundated with, with, with issues at the county parks at all.
So Ted, should we, should we adopt something like this and make it effective? Let's say, and I'm not saying this, but let's, if I was, for example, Monday, the 27th, would that give you and your guys enough time to, you know, talk about this at roll call? Let them know what has to be done and, and the Public Works could make some signs and partition off what they have to down there?
Yeah.
Would that be doable?
Yeah, just have somebody send me, when this is all done, an email what exactly you're gonna agree to tonight, just so I don't get it wrong. And give us the authority to close a park at, at the shift supervisor or my discretion, we should be fine.
So is the motion authorize the parks to be open as a cert, as of a certain date? And the police department is authorized to take whatever action necessary to, you know, enforce public safety, health, and welfare? I mean?
I'd like, I'd like it to be tomorrow, but if it can't be tomorrow, whatever date we can come up with is fine. Monday, okay. As I said, for tomorrow, people are just going berserk in their houses. They gotta get out.
Well, I'd like to answer that.
We need, we need to give some notice to the police department and put it out on our webpage.
Post it on the webpage and the Facebook page and allow the Public Works maybe to post it with signs and cordon off everything that has to be closed.
Sure. Sure. The sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned.
It would be walking trails only, correct?
Yeah, well, that's what I think. That's what we're saying, I believe.
Yeah, there's really, there's really nothing else. You gotta, the bathroom should be closed. You know, the parking should be limited. Everybody should be wearing their face mask if necessary.
Well, but, 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 A, the face mask is not an order. It's, it's urged. It's a six feet distance. That's the order.
Correct. I understand.
Yeah, just saying that. And we, I think we have to make sure that people know the Love Grove area. People cannot go in that area. That's?
Well, that, those are kinds of things that we can do right away with a sign or something, okay? And if we're gonna wait another month or so to open it up, forget about it, you know? It's today that people need this done.
Now, Frank. Frank, I have a question for you. If we didn't make a motion to close the parks, do we need to make, make a motion to open them back up?
No, how did we close them? I don't even remember.
We just arbitrarily closed them on a, on a Sunday night and do a Monday when, when the state of emergency was declared.
I assume Matt Gilbert did that in his position as Director of Park and Rec.
I'm, I'm here, Frank, and, and again, that was, that definitely was my recommendation. I agree. Everyone needs to get outside. I'm, I'm getting numerous phone calls. It was, at that time, we did not have the position to secure all the amenities of the park, including the skate parks, the, the non-walking trail areas. So I'm just under the direction of the board, beginning tomorrow, well, we will, you know, resume securing them so they're not accessible by daily park users, although they can use the walking trails.
So, so then the answer, Ray, then I think is Matt Gilbert's gonna make the decision when he has it ready to go.
Okay. So we can, we can advise the public tonight in this meeting that we're planning on reopening a park, the walking trails at the parks. And a, and a, an announcement will come from the Parks and Rec Director. Hopefully, as soon as Monday, that the parks will, the parking trails will be back open with certain restrictions.
I think we could even get it done sooner than that. I would just kind of see what kind of manpower we have tomorrow and what materials we have on hand. And we'll, I don't foresee a reason that we couldn't execute that, yeah.
So we'll be opening them as soon as possible and, and after an announcement by the Parks and Recreation Director.
As soon as it's safe, yes.
Okay.
Are we in the regular meeting or are we still in, it's 7:44? I just, I was out offline for a while. I don't know.
We never really transitioned or did the pledge or anything. And I, I had to bring something up about the tax office before we got into the regular meeting. I don't know what, how, how bound we are by, by, by time constraints.
Well, this is, well, go ahead.
Was it on the work session, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I spoke to the tax collector today about the, the tax and the Senate bill that was just signed into law by the governor. And she told me that they were advised by the county that Bucks County is only going to allow the county real estate taxes to be, the penalty period to be extended 30 days from June 30th to July 30th. After July 30th, the 10% penalty would become effective. That's, that's only on the county taxes, not on the, on the local Lower Southampton taxes, nor the refuse bills that we pay. Now, the tax collector said that her recommendation to us as in Lower Southampton is if the board would like, but we'd have to draw up a resolution to do this within 30 days, is that we could extend the discount period for the Lower Southampton real estate taxes until June 30th. And we could then extend the penalty period until July 30th, like the county does. And her recommendation for those dates is because school taxes go out on July 1st. So our discount period ends right now on April 30th. She said we, she would have no problem with us extending that by two months, the discount period until June 30th. And then the, the penalty period wouldn't become effective until July 31st instead of June 30th. So I said I would bring it up to the board tonight and, and we would talk about it. I know that, that resolution has been tabled. The other thing she asked me is would the board be opposed to her being in the tax office on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week? Because those are the last four days of the current discount period. And she would accept payments, she's getting apparently hundreds of calls. She would accept payments there from people at the window in a box. The people would be outside, partitioned off six feet apart. They would come up to the box, drop the payment in the box. She would stamp it as being paid, put it in the box, and they would take it and leave. She said she's asking permission to do that on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday because there's a, a high percentage of people that want to do this in person and get their stamped discount tax receipts done there.
Okay, Ray, I hear what you're saying. Okay, I, Ray, I hear what you're saying, and I just have a, a comment for Joe and Pete, uh, and that being, um, what does that do with our receivables and our payables? I mean, we got, we got pensions that got to be kept up to speed by, by the government or by the, the state. Uh, we've got payrolls that's got to be met, maybe some overtime. Um, what's the money situation going to be in that, in that late process? I know the school board's got their own issues, but what about the township? And are we still in good shape to be able to do that and extend it?
And Joe, we spoke about that, but if you want to weigh in, go ahead.
Yeah, we did speak about this earlier. Um, I, I would say that we should be fine with it. Right now, the real estate taxes are coming in as well as the, the sewer payments are coming in pretty steady. So the, the concerns that you will have, and, and that's what I touched base on at the county level and even with all the other municipalities, is your earned income tax, your LST, your American Town Business Privilege, they're the ones that where you're really going to have the concerns on. As far as the real estate tax, um, you know, whether, whether you continue the discount period, that should be fine. It shouldn't be too much of a major impact. It's something that you could offer the residents. Um, but again, you're extending it and you, and you're putting it further out for people to make payments. Um, as far as a cash flow, I'm not projecting that we're going to have a cash flow crunch, but you still want to have timely payments. Uh, as long as we probably don't extend it too far out, I, I, I think the township is, is financially sound for, to do that. With that comment, you're going to have, you're going to have some revenue challenges, absolutely, in this giving year and going into next year's budget.
Well, it's got to be, that, that could never be, couldn't, could come up to any kind of a standard of, especially with everybody getting unemployment, you know, all the, the other, the government's doing, how is that going to affect the EIA?
Ed, I didn't really hear what you said, you kind of got garbled up, but what I'm assuming that you said, as far as the unemployment, we, all the township managers don't know what's coming at us right now. All we're asking is, at the county level, we, we did, uh, view our concerns about that. They're going to attempt to help us in getting, trying to get us some unemployment numbers in our respective zip codes. If they're able to do that, then we should be able to have a better projection as far as where we're going to be short at and what that number really is. Right now, nobody has any clue what we're, what we're, we're going to be hit with. And that's why, you know, we're definitely going to have a revenue shortfall and, and you know, but we have to plan accordingly and operation accordingly.
Right, right. Well, that's my concern, because you're going to have an inflow, uh, significantly stronger than you're actually, and, and if that's going to be the case, what are we going to do about it?
Again, Ed, you kind of broke up, I really didn't hear what you, you, you said on that, sir, I'm sorry.
You're addressing it, so that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Did she mention what percent actually is already received?
Debbie said that, that the tax collector said that usually 75% of all of Lower Southampton's real estate taxes are paid within the discount period. She said she doesn't know for sure if it's going to be that percentage this year, but she has a, she has a, an idea that it will be 75% that if we, if we extend it out to June 30th.
On a, on a, on a normal year, you typically have, um, let's say with the previous tax collector, she would probably garner maybe 96 to 98% in a giving year. Our typical real estate tax receivable is typically anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000 that would be leanable in a respective year. That's a normal year. This year may be totally different. May, maybe it's 100, maybe it's, it's slightly more, maybe it's slightly less. Uh, but knowing people are losing jobs, uh, I would tend to believe that the collection percentages would decrease this year.
Yeah, obviously, that, I'm sure.
Yeah, so if we extend those dates at, at her recommendation, we would have to do that by resolution at the next meeting, otherwise our 30-day window will close if we don't do it by then.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing, I guess before we go to the, to the regular meeting is if, if the board doesn't mind, I was just, so we, we don't step on each other or walk over each other when we're, we're doing a roll call for any type of motions or voting, I was just going to go down alphabetically and go Sue, Deb, Kim, Ed and me, if we have to do any roll call votes, if, if everybody okay with that?
That's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm their problem with that, but before we leave, I, could you go back, because I'm not, I'm visualizing what she wants to do with stamping. Is she going to be, it's going to be outside of the building?
No, she's going to be inside the building and the residents will come up to a window. She's inside and they're outside and she'll have a box there outside that window. And then what they'll do is they'll put their payment in that box. She'll be wearing a mask, the, the residents will be advised to wear a mask. She'll then re- reach out, take the payment out of that box, process it, stamp it and put it back in the box for that person to take the receipt.
Okay, so, they're not going to be going in the building?
No. And she's going to put tape on the, on the rampway leading up six feet apart so that residents know not to, not to bypass that six-foot social distancing space.
And then we just highly recommend to wear the mask.
Yes.
I have no problem with that at all. I have no problem with that.
Okay. I told her I would let her know, uh, after the meeting, so she was going to put the word out tomorrow and she appreciates the board's flexibility in us.
Well, this is the time where we kind of be, have to be flexible, obviously.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And creative.
Are you guys ready, ready to go into the regular meeting?
Yeah, it's not, one other thing, and that is, we got the parade to worry about, which is July 4th. We don't need money to run it, but there's other issues. So we'll have to talk about that at some point also, right?
Well, sure, we have to wait and see what the governor is going to say. There's a lot to, to wait on, I suppose.
A lot of things to be done before waiting for the governor.
No, what I mean is, we don't know what, what the, the future plan is and stages with the block of a better work soft openings. Uh, we don't know what's, what's going to happen. That's what I mean.
Yeah, Joe told me today that the county said it's unlikely that they'll have those parades.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
All right, we can, we can't wait long though, because we need to get participants.
Well, that's if we have the parade, depending on what the governor says.
Agreed.
Moving forward, yeah, okay.
That may mean we don't have it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anybody else, or are we good to go to the regular meeting?
Good to go.
Good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we just transition in Peter, we don't have to stop and begin recording again, or do we?
You're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, here goes. Uh, good evening and welcome to the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Public Meeting held via teleconference for Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020. This is, uh, Ray Weldy of the Lower Southampton Board of Supervisors. Um, I'll ask the other supervisors to announce their names and then after that, we'll do the pledge. So we can go down the line, starting with Ms. Cummings.
Susan Cummings.
Deb.
Deb Kaplan.
Uh, Kim.
Kim Kutsaratus.
Thank you, and Ed?
Ed Shannon.
And this is Ray Weldy. Um, would everyone please rise for the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
As we did last meeting, um, and this was it, a request by Ms. Cummings, I'd like to do that again, this meeting is to hold a brief moment of silence for the victims of the coronavirus, not only those that have, um, caught it and are in a process of recovering, but maybe those that have suffered more severe conference, consequences or fatalities. So if we could have a brief moment of silence for that, that would be, um, respectful. Before the public meeting tonight, the board met in executive session at 6:30 PM. Um, in executive session, the board discussed some personnel issues and some contractual issues, um, that we'll be dealing with on some upcoming things over the summer. After we held our executive session, the board then held a work session. Um, in the work session, uh, the board spoke, um, about the parks and possibly reopening the parks. Um, I think we'll speak about that, Mr. Gilbert will speak about that, um, during the public meeting part, part. Um, we, we spoke about, um, the, the taxes, um, Senate bill that was just passed and signed into law by the governor on Monday, um, and some recommendations, um, that came from the tax collector and from the township manager as far as extending the discount period and the penalty period for Lower Southampton real estate taxes and, uh, the refuse, uh, tax. Um, if, if we adopt those, uh, recommendations, we'll do so by resolution at the next meeting, um, in May. Um, we have 30 days to do that from April 20th. Also during the work session, the board spoke about the upcoming, uh, 4th of July parade and, and the possibility of whether that's going to be held or not. Um, Mr. Gatto, if, before we go into the public comment, if you could just state, um, as we did last time, how this meeting was advertised?
Via, via the, the web, the website and I believe as far as in the paper too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weldy, we also, Mr. Weldy, we also had an exec, in, an executive session where we discussed some pending legal issues and personnel issues.
I, I said, oh, I didn't say the legal issues, but I did say that, that the personnel issues.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Frank. Um, first up on the agenda would be public comment, um, as part of the advertisement for the meeting, uh, members of the public were invited to send their comments in via email to a township email address. Um, if there are any comments, um, Mr. Gatto, would you be able to share with us what happened?
Sure, there, there are two that we received. Uh, one, one is from Liz Jenn, Liz Jennings from 479 Beachwood Avenue, Trivos. And she too was wondering whether the Dolphin Swim Club would, will open and what is the status of the summer camp program? That was one comment.
Okay.
Matt could address that at, at, at another point in time. Uh, the second one was from, uh, Warner Heisner from, uh, Lays Park Street. Uh, basically the person stated, I thought the construction was shut down, yet last week at the Brickyard Townhomes at Street and Buck Road, near the train tracks, at least one building was, had siding installed. Um, I'm a little bit familiar with this one. Uh, the director of zoning, Jeff Bartlett, as well as a developer, had some multiple conversations going on. These, basically there's two closings that are coming up at the Brickyard and what it was basically the people had no place to go. Um, they got approval from the Department of Community and Econo- Economic Development, DCED. They wrote a letter from it, to Mr., uh, Mr. Bartlett, or as, uh, an email, um, basically saying it's okay to proceed with that particular construction and to proceed with that, uh, temporary U and O being, it being issued and the closing. So that, that is why you saw some activity possibly at the Brickyard Town. Other than that, there's no other questions for the, uh, from the, from the residents.
Thank you Joe.
Okay.
Uh, next up on the agenda, item number one, um, would be the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, consent sub item 1A, approval of minutes from the meeting of April 8th, 2020. Item 1B, approval of accounts payable, April 22nd, 2020. And item 1C, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, April 22nd, 2020. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Shannon made that motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Shannon, is there a second?
Susan Kaplan will second.
Deb Kaplan, I'll make that second.
Okay, Ms. Kaplan has made the second. Um, we'll go down, do a roll call vote alphabetically, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, and this is Ray Weldy. Um, I vote to approve the agenda or the, the consent agenda, so that vote would pass, uh, that motion would pass with a vote of five to zero. Second up is the, item number two on the agenda, report in consideration of the status of this disabled public works director. Um, I think, Mr. Dillon, would you be comfortable giving a, just a brief synopsis of what-
Yes, I, and Mr. Gatto can add anything since he's more intimately involved in it, but, uh, the, Miss, Mr. Condo has been, um, unable to work due to certain injuries which he suffered and the, whether or not there's additional issues, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Gatto's been in consultation with Labor Council and Labor Council has directed certain actions be taken by the township in regard to this matter. There's a pending, uh, workers' compensation action, which is being, uh, defended by the workers' compensation carrier. And, uh, there's an issue of whether Mr. Condo should remain an employee of the township in light of the fact that he's indicated that he's unable to give, uh, the township any indication of when he might be able to work. I know Mr. Gatto consulted with the Labor Council who indicated if that in fact was the case and other things that have happened, that, uh, it would be within the purview of the Board of Supervisors if they so choose to terminate the employment of Mr. Gatto. A letter has been prepared.
Mr. Condo.
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Condo.
Mr. Condo, you said Mr. Gatto. That's twice, that's twice tonight.
It ends in a "no", Joe.
Joe, you're a short timer.
Yeah, it looks that way, and plus I'm short.
So, um, Mr. Condo, the, the issue that, of discussion is that you need, you need someone permanently in that position and Mr. Condo is not indicated his availability. In the event that you, uh, decide to terminate Mr. Condo, a letter has been prepared by Labor Council, uh, and if, if that's, if you're so inclined, you know, motion to, uh, authorize the, uh, the manager to, uh, send the letter as, uh, proposed by Labor Council, uh, which would terminate the employment of Mr. Condo. So that's, or you do nothing and he remains in your employ and, um, you continue to act with an acting, um, you know, public works.
Thank you Frank. Uh, Joe, do you, Mr. Gatto, do you have anything that you would like to add to Mr. Dillon's statement?
Um, ba- basically in, in talking with Labor Council, there, you know, although Mr. Condo basically said he's not abandoning his position, I, you know, I believe in that wholeheartedly. The other part is Mr. Condo's inability to provide and anticipate a return to work date basically amounts to indefinite leave. So I, I think that's where the issue lies and it, it, the township or the employer had, does not have a duty to accommodate requests that are for indefinite leave and that's what you have here under the circumstance, unfortunately.
Thank you Joe. So if the, uh, if the township, I'm sorry, if the Board of Supervisors chooses to proceed with that letter, then we would need a motion to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any one from the board that wants to weigh in or proceed with a motion?
Can we get some more detail on the letter, Joe? Ted Shannon?
Uh, that was sent today, Ed. I don't actually have it with me for the meeting, but you do have a letter, uh, addressed by the, by Labor Council. Um, Frank was provided with the, another email that was sent by Labor Council that basically spoke to the fact that i- if the township chooses to terminate employment, then they could recommend assisting in drafting a termination letter and that's what they did. They do draft a termination letter.
It's basic, the letter, I've been told, references the actions that have been taken up to this point and references that Mr. Condo has indicated he cannot say when he's able to return and therefore, you know, it's your position that you wish to terminate him from the position.
And the and and in talking to the Labor Council, this letter ensures the compliance with legal standards, so.
Thank you, Joe. Sue, did you have a question?
I I have a question. How long has Mr. Condo been out of work this time?
Under the the second, the second recent event, he's been out from, I believe, October of two thousand eighteen. And his surgery, I believe, was done in early January, two thousand nineteen.
When's the first one that he had, Joe?
Say again, Ed?
The first.
His first, his first issue, I believe, occurred in two thousand fourteen.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Then didn't we have another issue in in November of two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, it it was either October or November, somewhere around there. I I believe it was October, but it was late two thousand eighteen is when it happened.
Unfortunately, Mr. Gap, or Mr. Condo suffered two serious injuries while on the job, which adversely, I think, I know it's his shoulders, and and which has caused him with significant amounts of time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess most concerning is that he doesn't even respond to anything.
No, he he did. He did actually respond. The the Labor Council had me draft another letter. I put it in U S mail as well as hand-delivered it. I did receive a call from him this week, and that's when we had the conversation where I asked him on three given times, you know, if he could return to work, if he has any accommodations that he would like to return to work. Basically, he said, Joe, I'm not abandoned in my position, but I can't really give you a definitive answer on when I could come back. I need to make myself whole, and I don't know if the, I guess, the Workers' Court would deem him at a point in time disabled somehow. So he really could not give a a date.
And his doctor give any kind of a date? Or is that off limits or something?
Well, that that's being handled as part of the workers' compensation matter.
Yeah.
So he may never actually be a hundred percent whole again.
Yeah, true.
That that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I guess at this time, I would like to make a motion, if if I could, to authorize the township manager to send a letter of termination to our public works director as prepared by our Labor Council.
Okay, there's a motion then on the floor by Mr. Kutsaratus to prepare this termination letter and send it, and this is Ray Wildy. I would second that motion. So the motion's been seconded, and if we could go down the line on a roll call, vote on that, Ms. Cummings?
Yeah, also.
So you would vote, vote yes? Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
I I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Wildy. I would vote yes to approve the sending of that termination letter also, so that motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for weighing in on that. Next up is item three, and I believe that resolution has been tabled, correct, Mr. Mr. Dillon, until the next meeting?
Well, we had discussion about that today, and there is a the issue involves extension for payment of real estate taxes. And there is one, there's one version being floated by the county and a different one being floated by the state. And we had some discussion beforehand regarding this, and we wanted to get input from the tax collector, which you were able to provide. So we're going to prepare a resolution for the next meeting and circulate it, and we'll vote on that the next meeting.
Thank you, Frank, and and that conversation that Mr. Dillon's referring to that I had with the tax collector, it occurred this afternoon. And I spoke to the tax collector about her recommendations based on Senate bill, I believe it's five forty-one, that was signed into law by the governor this past Monday, to extend the discount period on Lower Southampton real estate taxes and Lower Southampton refuse taxes, and also to extend the penalty deadline for not only those two taxes, but the Bucks County real estate tax until a point down the road. So once we can prepare a resolution on that, we would address that at the next meeting. Next up on the agenda would be the manager's report. Mr. Gatto?
Okay. All right, as far as as far as the manager's report, as far as sanitation rebates, they again are running through June first. Currently, there's six hundred and fifty-four of them have been issued so far. If we need to at a point in time, we may eventually even extend that further if needed. But right now, we're we're holding to the June first date right now. Again, if you paid the last year's real estate bill and you received the rebate in the past, you can leave a message with Denise, who who was the our sewer coordinator at two one five three five seven seventy three hundred. I believe her extension is three twelve, and basically she would send you out a rebate check. If you basically have not paid or you have paid last year's real estate bill but have not received the rebate in the past, you can leave a message with Denise also. You may have to leave a copy of your driver's license in our Dropbox, and she would get you the rebate checkout. As far as the cleanup day, unfortunately, you know, that was scheduled for the twenty fifth this week. We're going to be postponing that, and hopefully, potentially in June, working with vendors, you know, if the governor allows us to implement certain things, then we may be able to pull this off. If not, it may wait till next year as far as the cleanup date component. And lastly is the second Friday fruit truck rally. Again, that's another keep our fingers crossed. That's scheduled for June twelfth from five to eight P M. And Matt, circling back to you, Matt, did you want to make a comment as far as dealing with the trails in recreation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mr. Chair and the board and our residents. I'm pleased to announce that we will reopen the parks with walking trails, but it will only be for walking trails and exercise. There will be no park amenities. Athletic fields are not open. Playgrounds are not open. The restrooms will not be open. It will be for walking and exercise passive recreation only. Please observe social distancing, and we look forward to seeing you in the parks. Have a great night.
Thank you, Matt. That's all, Mr. Wildy.
Matt, are you able to address the question that came in from the public, tentatively, for the summer?
I cannot specifically address that with a with a timeline right now. Our anticipation and hopes are that we will be able to host the summer camp program and open the Dolphin Swim Club and the Fertabar Pool. We will be following the governor's guidelines closely as to how this rolls out and feasibility of of all of those programs, yes.
And Matt, and Matt, would you be able to give the residents an idea? Are you going to announce when the park will be open?
The date will be to be determined as soon as they're deemed safe, and a lot of it will be told to the chief about and township manager, just to make sure that we are all in line with what's safest for our residents and and the park users, so.
So just for the residents to look at on our webpage and our Facebook page for that to happen, when the date has been decided?
Stay tuned, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Gatto, anything else from the manager's report?
Guess not.
I'll take that as a negative. Okay.
Supervisor's having technical difficulties.
Either that or he took his termination literally.
Oh, my gosh.
Supervisor's comments, Ms. Ms. Cummings?
Oh, boy, where where we again, again, thanking everybody from, first of all, putting on the meeting. Our community has really come together during this uncertain time. And, Mr. Gatto, we want to give you a big shout out and thank you for everything that you've done for the township, down to our fire marshal, our chief, Christina Lynn, who has put all of this together for us, and our office staff that's kept the the office going. I also want to thank the residents for being so patient and helping Lower Southampton with flattening our curve. It seems like we've done a great job with our social distancing. Don't forget to abide by some of the guidance that the governor has put out with wearing our masks when we're in public at the grocery stores. I'd like to thank our first responders, our healthcare workers, and along with any of our essential workers. We'll get through this. We'll get through this soon, and things, you know, soon will be back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, just please continue to be committed to following the C D C and Governor Wolf's COVID nineteen guidelines. We, as a municipality, want to continue to do our part in reducing the spread of this this virus. At the last township meeting, it was April eighth, I did mention one eight hundred numbers that are open twenty-four seven for help on various issues. There is an additional number for healthcare workers and first responders. That number is one eight hundred three two seven seven four five one. We at Lower Southampton Township, we will do what it takes to stay strong. And I also want to thank again our township employees. They are working to keep our township running, all the first responders, our medical help, the warriors that they are, the volunteers in our community that are stepping up to help where the help is needed. And also the essential workers that are out there at our grocery stores and all the essential businesses that are open, thank you so much for what you're doing for our community, and it does not go unnoticed. And again, we thank you and really appreciate what what you're doing for us. And again, we'll stay strong through this, and we'll look forward to moving forward when that time comes, according to Governor Wolf. And it'll be great to maybe one day, instead of six feet apart, we could be three feet apart. So we'll see when that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah, is is Mr. Gatto still with us? I have a question for him, or maybe Frank might be able to answer it.
Yes, I'm here, here.
Hey, Joe, I I've had a lot of people questioning me on exactly how the the zoning department is currently working. Is there any way maybe you could fill us in a little bit, you know, with that?
Well, it's it's very limited in nature right now. Basically, we are getting some pushback from, let's say, some local realtors for the most part. According to what the governor mandated, if the agreements of sale were not by a stipulated date, you really can't do anything on in the residential area. And the one example was at the Brickyard, and that was discussed in the agenda section, where we try to try to accommodate, you know, people and developers as best as we can. It it it's kind of hard. We're kind of balancing. The inspectors basically are not going out because by law they're not allowed to go out right now. And a lot of the firms that are the various third-party inspection firms have laid off a lot of their people themselves. So it's very limited in nature. We should be taking any type of permits. If people still want to apply and slip it through the mailbox, they still can send that stuff in. But right now, everything is very in a temporary nature right now, and we're doing the best we can there, but it's kind of within the within the guidelines of the governor's office and D C E D we have to comply with.
I can I can add to that, and that is the agreements of sale had to be signed by March fifth. But there's all sorts of problems because people sold their houses and they have to get another house, and people are do doing things to try to accommodate where necess went when they can. And I've had discussions with Jeff, and the law that was passed extended certain deadlines. And I sent Jeff a copy of the law, and I need to discuss it with him to make sure we're implementing the policy.
Okay, so even if even if, say, a homeowner came in and applied for a permit to, I don't know, we'll say, you know, remodel his bathroom, or inspector still couldn't even go out to to inspect?
Right now, no, and and according to what Jeff was saying, the we're not allowed to do any type of virtual inspecting right now. That's not, that has not passed D C E's, D C E D's permission nor the governor's permission to do kind of those remote or virtual type permit permitting inspections. So that that has not come down. That may be something that hopefully, maybe they do that at the Capitol and that, and we could, you know, extend those circumstances and assist people, but we, you know, we've been getting calls, we've been getting pushback, but we were very limited in what we could do.
I know Jeff's concerned about an onslaught when this opens up.
Sure, I'm sure if people want to get back to work, so, yeah. All righty, and and, you know, thank, thank you both. Thank you both very much for that. One last thing for me, just, you know, to jump on the coattails of everybody else, I want to thank the public for continuing to understand, you know, as far as the other six feet guidelines, you know, as far as the public understand, and, you know, thank the public for dealing with us with these with these types of meetings. Hopefully, things will be back to normal real soon, and just, you know, stay healthy, everyone. That's it.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Shannon?
Yes, I'd like to be on the coattails of, you know, Pete doing a great job with these programs. Chris, Ray yourself, all the other employees that are working so hard to keep us, keep us afloat, I guess, and keep things moving in the township. And opening of the parks would be, I think, is going to be a great ease up for most of the people in town that at least they'll start to get out and go for a walk or something without saying the four wheels in their house. And the police has approved this, and and Matt is going forward with it. I think it's going to be a great thing for us short term. And thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ed. I just have a few things before we close out. I'd like to thank the police officers and all of the township employees that are on stagger shifts and come in and keep things running, even though it's a skeleton crew. They're in there day in and day out to make sure that at least the bare bones work is getting done. So thank you, and thank you to Mr. Kim and Ms. Lynn for and Mr. Gatto for pulling off these virtual meetings now, two meetings in a row, and Lord knows how many more we're going to have to have this way, but thank you for for getting us up to speed on the technology because it's quite a quite a challenge for for some of this, but thank you for doing that. I'd like to thank John Grin from the Veterans Advisory Council, along with John Corpinetta, for pairing up with Michael Little and his wife. Mr. Little and his wife were able to put together and make hand-make twenty-five masks that they donated to the V A C, and the V A C donated that to veterans in Lower Southampton so that they would at least have one mask to wear because of the shortage of masks that that everyone's been encountering. I'd also like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Gilbert for having an open discussion earlier about the reopening of the parks. We received a tremendous amount of inquiries from residents, and we understand your frustration on wanting to get the heck out of your house and get to the walking trails and get some fresh air. And we want to make sure that's done safely, and we realize that you're you're the taxpayers and you pay for those parks to be open. And we're going to do everything that we can to get them open safely as soon as we can, so thank you. And last but not least, in the conversation with the tax office and the tax collector earlier, she asked for and was granted approval by the board to open her office on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, April twenty on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, April 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th, to accept payments for what is still now the discount period for county township and refuse taxes. Um, so the tax collector's office will be open, um, with certain restrictions. She's going to accept the payments, um, at a window. She'll have a box outside. Residents will be asked to drop their payment off in the box, um, to wear a mask. She'll be wearing a mask. She'll take the payment, she'll process it, and she'll put a stamped paid receipt back in the box for you to take. Uh, the tax colo, tax collector will also have, um, taped intervals off of six feet outside, so residents can maintain six-foot social distancing. So again, that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week during the tax collector's hours. Um, so, uh, that's all I have. I wish, I hope everyone stays healthy and washes their hands when we get over this a whole lot sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Mr. Weldy, I, I apologize. You know, I, uh, I'm not sure, there's one last thing I wanted to bring up, and I almost forgot. Uh, probably not, most, most of our pro, public probably doesn't know that one of our officers actually had the COVID-19. And I was just, you know, I, I, I'm remiss to, to have almost forgotten to ask about him, but, you know, Chief Cremble, could you give us an update on how he is, please?
Uh, he's starting work, actually, right now. His first shift was tonight.
Uh, good, good.
Unfortunately, his grandfather died, uh, resulted this as well. So, uh, but he's healthy, he's back to work tonight.
Good to hear. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, uh, thank you. I, I apologize. I just wanted to, to find out how he was. Well, deepest condolences to his grandfather, and, and we're all help, happy that he is, uh, back to work again. Thank you.
I just have a last comment, if you don't mind, Deb Kaplan. It wasn't, um, under the Sunshine Act, Chris, Christina Lynn had to get our draft of our minutes in, I believe it was 48 hours. And, uh, that wasn't an easy task, I know, but she, she was able to do it. And I, I just wanted to say thank you because I know that that was a, a tough thing to do, to get it out so quickly. So I just wanted to do a shout out for Christina Lynn on the minutes under the Sunshine Act in this situation.
Thank you, Deb. Um, if there aren't any further comments, then, um, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us in this virtual meeting. Um, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
There is.
Mr. Shannon's made the motion. Is there a second? Okay, someone seconded, I heard. Okay, and then we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes, I'm to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, to adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
I've always wanted to say no for this, but I'll say yes.
Thank you. Just getting it in the red's bedtime. Mr. Shannon?
Absolutely.
And this is Ray Weldy. I'll vote to approve the motion. A motion to adjourn approves with a vote of five to nothing. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Stay safe and have a good evening. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Night, thank you.